Hello.
Council President, Council Members, we are now live.
You're muted, Council President.
Here we go. Oh, good morning, everyone. Uh, we're gonna get started now. So I understand that state law currently requires that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote council session. Due to the current public health emergency, City Council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meetings and offer public comment are included in the stated reading notice that was published in the Daily News Inquirer and Legal Intelligence prior to the meeting and can also be found on P H L Council dot com. I now note that the hour has come and the clerk will please call a roll to take attendance. Uh, members that are in attendance will please indicate that you're present or say a couple of words to make sure, uh, that your image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Good morning, I am present, looking forward to today's council session.
Morning.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Good morning, everyone, I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman Dom.
Good morning, Council President, and good morning colleagues and good morning to the public. Hope everyone's well.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, present.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, and good morning Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilman Green.
Morning, Council President, colleagues, looking forward to today's.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gim.
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, uh, looking forward to today.
Good morning.
Councilman Heenan.
Morning, Council President, and good morning colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President, good morning colleagues. Good, I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman O.
Morning, Council President, good morning colleagues. I'm present.
Morning.
Councilman O'Neil.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President, good morning colleagues and viewing public.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Kenone Sanchez.
Buenos dias, buenos dias, buenos dias, good things happen in Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilman Scola.
Good morning, Council President, and good morning colleagues, present.
Councilman Thomas.
Morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, happy to serve the city of Philadelphia.
Morning.
Council President Clark.
I am present. Thank you all very much, uh, former of the council is present, will now come to order. Despite the, the great need, there will be no invocation today. Uh, we will however observe a very brief moment of silent prayer for our city, its leaders, and its citizens during the current public health crisis. Can we now please observe a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Scola.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um. Um, like to move that the acceptance for the journal for the meeting Thursday, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, stand approved, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and our journal is approved, and our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, on behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Chair, thanks to Councilwoman, and our next order of business is communications. And Mr. Decker, would you please read the messages from the mayor and any other communication that you may have in your possession?
From the mayor to the president, to members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am submitting here with the, for the consideration of your honorable body. A resolution appointing Chris Barnes to the Board of Directors for the South Street Head House District, and a resolution appointing Katrina Johnston Zimmerman to the Board of Directors of the South Street Head House District, and a resolution appointing Adam Zaken to the Board of Directors for the South Street Head House District, and a resolution appointing Allison Harvey Hindman to the Board of Directors for the South Street Head House District, and a resolution appointing Monica Thompson to the Board of Directors for the South Street Head House District, and a resolution appointing Adam Shapiro to the Board of Directors for the South Street Head House District, and a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Loan Charter, providing for the expansion of the Board of License and Inspection Review, and providing for the submission of the proposed amendment to the electors of Philadelphia, and an ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Loan Charter, providing for the expansion of the Board of License and Inspection Review, and an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development a parcel of land situated twenty four oh one Chestnut Street for further conveyance, and authorizing the plotting upon city plan number three oh seven of a right-of-way for bridge repair, maintenance, and reconstruction purposes for stormwater sewer drainage purposes, and an ordinance authorizing the Philadelphia Municipal Authority, the Philadelphia Gas Works by Philadelphia Facilities Management Corporation, solely in its capacity as operator and manager of the city-owned Philadelphia Gas Works, to enter into certain transactions and contracts regarding the lease and license of portions of the premises located at five thousand Somerdale Avenue and fifty five oh one Whittaker Avenue, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, for the use of the Philadelphia Gas Works, all under such terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker, and our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. Uh, by way of a reminder, uh, we're asking that all resolutions, including privileged resolutions, be placed on the final passage calendar for the next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide an appropriate opportunity for public comment. I want to thank you very much in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Uh, Mr. Decker, will you please read the titles of the legislation that is being offered today by members?
Councilwoman Parker offers one bill and two resolutions, entailed an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Loan Charter, providing for the expansion of the Board of License and Inspection Review as approved by resolution of the City Council.
Refer to committee.
And a resolution commending the Philadelphia Seventy Sixers in creating the Buy Black Program to support black-owned small businesses.
For next week's calendar.
And a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Loan Charter, providing for the expansion of the Board of License and Inspection Review.
Refer to committee.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers two resolutions, and titled a resolution honoring and congratulating Philadelphia natives, sincere Harris and Erin Wilson for their new positions as White House Liaison for the Environmental Protection Agency and Special Assistant to the President and Deputy Director for the White House Office of Political Affairs and Strategy.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing February two thousand twenty one as Career and Technical Education CTE Awareness Month in Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gim offers one resolution, entitled a resolution commemorating the life and legacy of community activist Russell Medden, whose tireless advocacy for vibrant public space and public fight share led to millions of Philadelphians enjoying and celebrating the city of Philadelphia's public trails and provided a powerful model of civic engagement for the nation and the world.
Good guy. Next week's calendar.
Councilman Jones offers one bill and two resolutions, entailed an ordinance repealing chapter twenty one twelve hundred of the Philadelphia Code and titled Police Advisory Board, and replacing it with a new chapter, twenty one twelve hundred, that reconstitutes and renames the board as the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, and is authorized by the charter, provides for the commission's appointment, the powers and duties of the commission, and the manner in which the commission and other officers, employees, and agencies shall fulfill their respective responsibilities with respect to the commission.
Refer to committee.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold public hearings examining the feasibility of a multi-state reciprocity program for witness relocation using United States Department of Housing and Urban Development and public housing agency properties.
Today's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold public hearings to examine more equitable solutions to crime scene cleanup policies that place the logistical and financial burden on the families of homicide victims.
Today's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers two bills, entailed an ordinance demanding title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising and clarifying certain provisions and making technical changes, and an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development a parcel of land situated twenty four oh one Chestnut Street for further conveyance.
Refer to committee.
Councilwoman Kenone Sanchez offers two bills. On behalf of Council President, Councilwoman Sanchez offers an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty one from the General Fund, the council to the General Fund, the Department of Planning and Development.
Committee.
And on her own behalf, Councilwoman Sanchez offers an ordinance amending title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code and titled zoning and planning by revising and clarifying certain provisions and making technical changes.
Also refer to committee.
Councilman Green offers two bills. On behalf of Council President, Councilman Green offers an ordinance authorizing.
State.
Municipal Authority and the Philadelphia Gas Works by Philadelphia Facilities Management Corporation, solely in its capacity as operator and manager of the city-owned Philadelphia Gas Works, to enter into certain transactions and contracts regarding the lease and license of portions of the premises located at five thousand Somerdale Avenue, fifty five oh one Whittaker Avenue.
Refer to committee.
Councilman Green offers on his own behalf an ordinance amending section twenty six ten of the Philadelphia Code and titled Statement of Financial Interests by revising the required conditions and information for filing.
Refer to committee.
Councilwoman Brooks offers one resolution, entitled a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Intergenerational Affairs and Aging to hold public hearings examining solutions to the ongoing housing crisis impacting senior Philadelphians.
And that will be on today's calendar.
Councilman Dom offers two resolutions, entitled, entitled a resolution honoring Stephanie Resnick on her receipt of the prestigious Judge Learn Hand Award from the American Jewish Committee in Philadelphia for her distinguished legal career.
Today's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing the work of William R. Sasso upon his transition from his role as Chairman of Stradly, Ronan, Stevens, and Young to Chairman Emeritus.
And for next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gaultier offers one resolution, appointing Andrew Goodman to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Land Bank.
That's, that's for, yeah, it's the one I was telling you about, huh? Uh, what happened, we mean? Okay, they can do it?
Um, somebody needs to use their mic. Um, Mr. Decker, um, that, that will be on next week's calendar, and then, Mr. Decker, I think I said that one of the honorees, uh, was going to be on today's calendar, I think that should be on next week's calendar. Did you catch that? Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Decker.
Councilman Thomas offers three resolutions, entitled a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings to review the motor vehicle stop of a young mother of her and her two-year-old son and resulting police activities, as well as other incidents that arose following the police killing of Walter Wallace.
Today's calendar.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating the Saint Joseph's Preparatory School Football Team on their successful twenty twenty season and overall six-and-oh record in the Philadelphia Catholic League.
Next, next week's calendar.
And a resolution thanking Congress for passing the Save Our Stages Act and urging the Small Business Administration to equitably promote and distribute funds while continuing to support and invest in the arts and culture sector.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Scola offers one bill and six resolutions, entitled an ordinance amending chapter nine thirty nine hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Property Licenses and Owner Accountability, section eight nine oh six entitled Property License Fees, chapter fourteen six oh four entitled Accessory Uses and Structures, and chapter nineteen twenty four hundred entitled Hotel Room Rental Tax, to add and revise provisions related to the use of properties for limited lodging and hotel purposes and to the collection of hotel rental taxes in connection therewith.
That will be referred to committee.
And a resolution appointing Chris Barnes to the Board of Directors for the South Street Head House District, and a resolution appointing Katrina Johnston Zimmerman to the Board of Directors of the South Street Head House District, and a resolution appointing Adam Zaken to the Board of Directors of the South Street Head House District, and a resolution appointing Allison Harvey Hindman to the Board of Directors of the South Street Head House District, and a resolution appointing Monica Thompson to the Board of Directors of the South Street Head House District, and a resolution appointing Adam Shapiro to the Board of Directors for the South Street Head House District.
Those resolutions will be referred to committee.
Councilwoman Bass offers one bill and two resolutions. On behalf of Council President, Councilwoman Bass offers an ordinance amending title seventeen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Contracts and Procurement by amending chapter seventeen fourteen hundred and titled Non-Competitively Bid Contracts Financial Assistance to provide procedures applicable to the awarding of contracts to non-city providers of vaccine doses for COVID nineteen and related variants.
Refer to committee.
Councilwoman Bass offers on her own behalf a resolution recognizing February seventh, two thousand twenty one as National Black HIV AIDS Awareness Day, and honoring the work of Babashi in providing access to culturally sensitive, high-quality healthcare, HIV AIDS services, health education, and social services.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing the week of February one, two thousand twenty one, to February seven, two thousand twenty one as National Gun Violence Survivors Week to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and uplift the resilient voices of survivors in Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman O offers one bill and one resolution, entitled an ordinance amending chapter nineteen twenty six hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receipts Taxes by expanding the distressed business tax credit to include businesses impacted by COVID nineteen restrictions.
That will be referred to committee.
And a resolution expressing support for longtime Philadelphia news anchor Yuki Washington and standing with all impacted employees at CBS Three amid reports of gross misconduct at the network.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, that concludes the introduction of bills and resolutions. We have no reports from committee today, so our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar of there being no bills on the first reading calendars, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker. For motion concerning the resolutions on the final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on the final passage calendar. They are resolution numbers two one zero 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 eight, two one zero 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 nine, two one zero zero one one, two one zero zero one two, two one zero zero one three, two one zero zero one four, two one zero zero one five, two one zero zero one six, two one zero zero one seven, two one zero zero one eight, two one zero zero one nine, two one zero zero two zero, two one zero zero two one, two one zero zero two two, two one zero zero two three, two one zero zero two four, two one zero zero two five, two one zero zero two six, two one zero zero two seven, two one zero zero two eight, two one zero zero two nine, two one zero zero three five, two one zero zero three six, two one zero zero three seven, two one zero zero three nine, two one zero zero four zero, two one zero zero four two, two one zero zero four three, two one zero zero four four, and two one zero zero four seven. Sir.
Thank you, it's been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolution just read by Councilwoman Parker. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, motion carries.
Aye.
Consider the resolution consent agenda shortly. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the resolutions being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolution is being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today, number two one zero zero three eight. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman. Thank you. So before we consider, uh, the calendar, uh, today, we will have our public comment session. Um, we're gonna take about three, four, or five minutes, uh, to give our technology professionals some time to connect the speakers we have for today's meeting, um, so let's take a brief break.
Thank you very much.
Members, we are now ayes. Thank you. Well, we're now going to move into our public comment session. Um but be- before we proceed with the consideration of the public comment, we'll take a brief moment, and I'm going to go over some rules. Um now that everyone is connected to the meeting, and before considering the resolutions and bills we have before us today, we will consider the public comment. It will go as follows. Our public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at a session of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call two one five, six eight six, three four oh six by three P M. The day before the session, to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support uh or against the legislation, and we add you to the list. We will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Uh under ideal circumstances, um we will each have three minutes. I think we actually have three minutes today to speak. Uh but the time minute may vary from time to time. Uh in order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. So once invited to the meeting and asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony, and when there are thirty seconds remaining to your time, you will be reminded of this. Uh once your allotted time has passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks. Shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. Uh I also reserve the right to limit the number of speakers where repetitious comments are being made on the same matter, and to limit the scope of the testimony to only certain items on the agenda during the emergency, which could affect call, callbacks, or public comment at a meeting. Uh please be aware um that this public meeting is being recorded. Because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So by continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. I will now ask the chief clerk to read the first name on our list uh for our public comment.
The first speaker is Shonda McLean.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm calling uh regarding resolution two zero 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 three eight. And I want to thank City Council and Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson um for this proclamation. The work I've done with Vanessa Voice Gambadi to support the African American Children's Book Fair over the years, whether as an editor at the Philadelphia Tribune, or now, I've done because I believe in what she's doing and the impact her work has on the African American community. Books have played an important role, an important role in my life, and I only wish I had the exposure and access to books written by and for African Americans when I was a child. So thank you to Vanessa for your work with the African American Children's Book Fair, and thank you to the council for this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, just state your name, please.
My name is Shonda McLean.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Carol Weatherford.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I
State your name.
I am Carol Boston Weatherford. I am Carol Boston Weatherford, the author of more than fifty books for young people, the author of at least five books that have Philadelphia tie-ins. Box, Henry Brown Mails Himself to Freedom, Moses, When Harriet Tubman Led Her People to Freedom, Bye and Bye, Charles Albert Tinley, The Father of Gospel Music, and two books about jazz greats who have ties to Philadelphia, Before John Was a Jazz Giant and Becoming Billie Holiday. I'm especially pleased to uh support and uh accept the proclamation uh for the twenty-ninth annual African American Children's Book Fair, because I've been involved in the fair for more than fifty years, so I know the importance of the event to the Philadelphia community and to the community of black book ilus- black children's book authors and illustrators. This is an event where black children's book authors and illustrators get a chance to meet children who, some of whom have never met, a real live author or illustrator, and where families can come and choose from more black books than they can at in any other event that in the year and perhaps in the country. So it it's an important event for literacy and also for the African Amer- African American community, and I'm heartened that the council is recognizing the event. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
The next speaker is Shamika Sawyer.
Yes, good morning. Um I am Shamika Sawyer. I am testo- given a testimony on behalf of Councilwoman Bass and the National Gun Violence Survivors Week um resolution that she's introducing. I do believe that this is important. My brother was murdered on uh June first um twenty twenty during the pandemic, and I do feel that um survivors of of gun violence, especially the the victims' families, should be recognized um because when the cameras go off, we are still in pain. When there's no more media attention, we are still in pain, and I do believe that um a National Gun Violence Survivors Week will bring light and uh shed more um um impact on what we go through. Thank you.
Thank you so much and our condolences.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mary Bentley Lamar.
Greetings. I am Mary Bentley Lamar, the North Atlantic Regional Director of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and I'm pleased to be here to support resolution number two one zero 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 eight. So I first want to bring greetings to the Honorable City of Philadelphia Council President Darryl Clark and Resolution Sponsor and Majority Leader, Council Member Cheryl Parker, and all the members of the council. We truly appreciate your support through the years of Alpha Kappa Alpha. Now, I'm your neighbor. I live in New Jersey. I and approximately five thousand of my sorority sisters will virtually enter the city of brotherly love for the ninetieth annual North Atlantic Regional Conference, March fourth through the seventh, twenty twenty one. We're honored that you proposed to make March fourth Alpha Kappa Alpha Day in Philadelphia with this resolution. On that day, I want to personally invite you and the city to our public meeting that showcases national and local dignitaries, honors community leaders, and highlights community service. The public meeting will feature a performance by Kathy Sledge, and the keynote address will be delivered by Pulitzer Prize-winning journalist and Alpha Kappa Alpha woman Yamish Alcindore. Just a brief history, Alpha Kappa Alpha has ties to the city of bu- brotherly love. Now, I understand that Augusta, Gussie Clark, now deceased, was a member of your council, and she's an Alpha Kappa Alpha woman. We were founded at Howard University in nineteen oh eight. Our founder Ethel Hedman Lio resided in the Philadelphia area in her latter years, and she chartered the first graduate chapter in Philadelphia, Omega Omega Chapter. Rosa Parks, today would have been her one hundred and eighth birthday, and I understand that your septa system has uh set aside a bus to- a seat on the bus today in her honor. She's an Alpha Kappa Alpha member. And making history her story is the second highest officer in the United States, our sorority sister Kamala Harris, Vice President Kam- Kamala Harris. So it's no accident that the resolution number ends in oh eight. We appreciate, I, you must have uh made that happen. We appreciate that you made that happen because, on behalf of the North Atlantic members spanning from Washington, D C to Maine, we want to thank you for this consideration and joyfully request that resolution number two one zero 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 eight, designating March fourth, twenty twenty one, as Alpha Kappa Alpha Day in Philadelphia be adopted. Thank you so much.
Thank you, neighbor. Thank you for your testimony, and thank all all the awesome work you have done in the past. We really appreciate you all. You're welcome.
The next speaker is John Scott.
Uh good morning. Uh thank you, Council President, members of council. My name is John Scott. I'm speaking on bill two one zero zero three eight concerning the zoning reforms. I'm a neighborhood advocate and a committee person and chair of the Eighteenth Ward in Fishtown. I want to first talk about how the RCOs have fared under the current zoning code. In Fishtown, our RCO was once the gold standard. Zoning meetings brought the highest turnout, and votes were were cast to support or oppose each project, and they were held anonymously, and all neighbors had a vote. What was once the gold standard of community democracy has become a swamp infested by realtors, developers, and special interests. This year, only eighty people out of the twenty-six thousand in the neighborhood were even allowed to elect the board, and even those eighty were required to choose from a specific slate of candidates. Regular residents are not allowed to join the zoning committee anymore, while non-resident realtors are. Neighbors that do participate must sign up, and because there is no privacy policy in place, board members offer up few targeted email address lists to business groups. Our participation is now a marketing ploy. We are told by the RCO that we can't talk about parking because it's not a zoning issue. Meanwhile, the organization's president lobbies for parking restrictions that make it even worse. This is what has become of our democracy in our community, our RCO system that was supposed to give us a voice. But downtown at the Z B A, it's even worse. When we voice our opinions at the Z B A, we are muted. In a democracy, we try to speak, and we are muted. When two hundred of my neighbors speak on behalf of a local business and their natural expansion, the Z B A denies them. But when an unscrupulous developer comes to the Z B A, our opposition is ignored. Ninety-two percent of the variance passes. The only ones that don't are the small businesses and the longtime neighbors. The word hardship isn't even mentioned anymore at most zoning meetings, and this is what our city democracy has become. The standards that you all put in place in two thousand twelve are now far out the window. RCOs that are now elected by less than one percent of the community, I'm sure that wasn't the objective. Community zoning meetings that don't address parking concerns, weren't they part of the objective in two thousand twelve? And Z B A hearings where the connect to get everything they ask for despite council's wishes, and everyone else gets the mute button, well, I'm sure that wasn't the goal either. Council President, I've worked with neighborhood groups across the city who share our concerns. I've spoken out for Strawberry Mansion and their right to determine the design direction of their own neighborhood. I've spoken in South Kensington about their right to preserve their community gardens in the and I've spoken many times in Fishtown with my longtime residents who wish only not to be buried by endless construction. Council President, I support your bill and I commend your leadership. This is long overdue. Council, please support two one zero zero three eight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scott. Appreciate your testimony.
The next speaker is Jude Anne Spencer.
Um good morning, Council President Clark and all members present. Um my name is Jude Anne Spencer Phillips, and I'm the Communication Specialist at Babashi Transition to Hope. I am speaking in support of the resolution to recognize February seventh as National Black HIV AIDS Awareness Day and to honor the work of Babashi Transition to Hope. On behalf of Babashi, I would like to first thank Councilmember Bass for introducing this resolution, as well as Councilmembers Parker, Kim, Brooks, Henon, Thomas, and Don for co-sponsoring. Um during the height of the HIV AIDS epidemic, Babashi's co-founder and first executive director, Dr. Rashida Abdul Kabir, while working in the public health sector, so firsthand the disparities in our health system when treating with communities of color. What she realized was that the majority of the black population received the least amount of information and access to resources as the disease continued to spread within our communities, and she knew that something needed to be done. In nineteen eighty-five, Babashi was founded as a direct response to this crisis in low-income communities of color with the aim of providing access to culturally sensitive, high-quality healthcare, HIV AIDS services, health education, and social services. We were the first African American organization in the United States to address this crisis in urban communities, and today we remain one of Philadelphia's largest providers of HIV AIDS education and services for the urban community. Although much progress has been made since the beginning of the HIV AIDS epidemic, black and African American populations continue to be disproportionately affected by the disease. According to the CDC, black and African American individuals account for a higher proportion of new diagnoses and people with HIV compared to other races and ethnicities. And in fact, although black and African American persons make up thirteen percent of the U S population, we account for forty-three percent of all new HIV cases based on two thousand eighteen reports. Observances such as National Black HIV AIDS Awareness Day help to bring much-needed attention to these disparities that continue to exist in our communities. And as an organization that works directly with low-income communities of color, Babashi fully supports any opportunity to increase awareness, encourage dialogue, and hi- and highlight the work that has been done and that still needs to be done to bring an end to health and social inequities. Um thank you for your time, and on behalf of Babashi, again, thank you for acknowledging the work that we do.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Appreciate you.
The next speaker is Andrew Miller.
Uh hi, hi, Council. Um my name is Andrew Miller. Uh I'm a constituent in the Eighteenth Ward in Fishtown and a member of the Rewards Coalition. I'm testifying today to support bill two one zero zero three eight uh and thank Council President Clark uh for introducing this uh and as well as encourage the rest of council to support the bill. It has become apparent to many of us in the community that the current zoning code and organizations that uphold and enforce the zoning code have significant shortcomings. These shortcomings manifest themselves in various ways. Uh we we've seen the shortcomings in matters of racial equity, as we discussed here before when we were establishing the Strawberry Mansion overlay. Uh we've seen unsafe construction practices as a result of an unhealthy and counterproductive deference to developers and real estate speculators. Uh I mean, you can you can look at to the June fifth memorial at Twenty Second Market, multiple recent build, more recent building collapses uh that ha- happened in Fishtown as well as elsewhere throughout the city as testimony to that as well. Uh we've we've seen the destruction, the unnecessary destruction of Philadelphia history, which is arguably one of our greatest assets in driving tourism to our various neighborhoods. Uh and for these and and other reasons stated by others today, I I ask that City Council pass bill two one zero zero three eight so that we can seek necessary improvements and greater accountability in the zoning process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Valerie Ross.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Good morning. Uh state your name for the record. Receive your testimony.
Yes, my name, uh my name is Valerie Ross. I'm a co-founder of West Philadelphians for Progressive Planning and Development, an RCO. I'm a uh sort of, I've received a certificate in Citizens Planning Institute as well, and I'm uh calling in support of City Council uh Minister Darryl Clark's uh proposal for zoning review board two one zero zero three eight. I am, I am uh commenting in support for a number of reasons. I won't repeat others. I will I will send my support to the other RCOs who have spoken. We have the identical experience in West Philly with dangerous construction, uh rampant real estate speculation, and I would also note forty thousand units in the city, affordable units being uh wiped out in the last few years, just since two thousand fifteen, um in a in a time when we're desperate for affordable housing. Uh we see an incoherent system currently with Z B A, as has already been mentioned, uh approving ninety-two percent, I believe, of all requests, all variances put before them. We are, as RCOs, overwhelmed with the number of variance requests, and never is their hardship demonstrated. Uh we have uh lots of neighborhoods underway in terms of being gentrified. There's no support for homeowners, very limited support. There's no support for homeowners, very limited support. The developers are taking over, RCOs, taking over local politics, and so we have that issue, plus mounting research on the density argument, which is usually the excuse that developers use to trample over neighborhoods, is showing, A, the density, density issues are creating all sorts of health and climate problems. They're having a terrible effect on our environment at a time of global warming. The scientists, global scientists right now are saying what we should be doing is not building more where there's no population demand for more market rate units. We should be retrofitting houses, supporting, supporting our under, underclass, I mean, our lower-income residents to retrofit their houses, and also affluent people should be retrofitting. We need for the City Council to take control of this so that there's coherent people who understand our neighborhoods and what we're going through. I thank you for this proposal. I hope it passes because we desperately, desperately need it. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you for your testimony, ma'am.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Decker. That concludes our public comment. We will now, we now consider today's resolution consent agenda. I will ask the clerk to please read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the resolution consent agenda and placed on today's regular final passes calendar. Mr. Decker will now read the titles of the resolutions on the consent agenda.
Resolution number two, one, zero, 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 eight, entitled the resolution honoring the Ninetieth North Atlantic Regional Conference of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated and declaring March fourth, two thousand twenty-one as Alpha Kappa Alpha Day in the city of Philadelphia. And resolution number two, one, zero, 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 nine, entitled the resolution honoring the African-American Children's Book Project on the occasion of its twenty-ninth Annual African-American Children's Book Fair. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, one, one, entitled the resolution calling on Congress to pass House Resolution sixty-four, twenty-two, to create a national infrastructure bank. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, one, two, entitled the resolution honoring the life and legacy of Ted Kirsch, where his lifelong commitment to educating children, educating children, empowering and supporting teachers, and strengthening the labor movement. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, one, three, entitled the resolution honoring and celebrating Philadelphia's living legends, Dr. Kizmekia Corbett, Reverend Gregory Holston, Reverend Mark Tyler, Deputy Police Commissioner Melvin Singleton, State Representative Joanna McClinton, and the Doctors of the Black Doctors Consortium, who were the guiding lights of the year twenty twenty and are trailblazers and leaders in their respective fields of medicine, research, politics, religion, the justice system, and community outreach, as part of the commemoration of Black History Month. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, one, four, entitled the resolution honoring the life and legacy of esteemed Philadelphia entrepreneur and restaurateur Kevin Parker. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, one, five, entitled the resolution honoring Henry Aaron, who had a lifetime of pioneering achievements as a professional athlete and civil rights champion. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, one, six, entitled the resolution also naming the thirteen-hundred block of South Street Kevin Parker Way to honor and celebrate the legacy of Kevin Parker. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, one, seven, entitled the resolution also naming the seven-thousand block of Woodland Avenue Paul "Earthquake" Moore Way to honor and celebrate Paul "Earthquake" Moore for a lifetime of devoted service to the Southwest Philadelphia community. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, one, eight, entitled the resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of two thousand one Pemberton Street located in the second council-matic district. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, one, nine, entitled the resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of eight thirty-three East Madison Street located in the seventh council-matic district. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, two, zero, entitled the resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of seventeen thirty-six and seventeen thirty-eight Bodine Street located in the seventh council-matic district. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, two, one, entitled, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of nineteen oh-seven North Phillips Street located in the seventh council-matic district. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, two, two, entitled the resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of two thousand six North Lawrence Street located in the seventh council-matic district. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, two, three, entitled the resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of two, twenty thirty-one Orkney Street located in the seventh council-matic district. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, two, four, entitled the resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of twenty thirty-four Oak Street located in the seventh council-matic district. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, two, five, entitled the resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of twenty-two forty-nine Waterloo Street located in the seventh council-matic district. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, two, six, entitled the resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of twenty-four fifty-one North Sixth, Sixth Street located in this, in the seventh council-matic district. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, two, seven, entitled the resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of twenty-six sixty-one North Orianna Street located in the seventh council-matic district. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, two, eight, entitled the resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of forty-two fifty-seven North Fairhill Street located in the seventh council-matic district. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, two, nine, entitled the resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of forty-three thirty-eight Tackawanna Street located in the seventh council-matic district. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, three, five, entitled the resolution recognizing the outstanding work of Deborah Diamond as President of Campus Philly upon her departure from the organization. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, three, six, entitled the resolution honoring and congratulating Dr. Rachel Levine upon her appointment to the Assistant Health Secretary in the administration of President Joseph Biden, and recognizing her outstanding contributions to the safety and health of Pennsylvanians during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, three, seven, entitled the resolution recognizing AJC Philadelphia for its work with We Are Here and ORT in the twenty-twenty-one commemoration of International Holocaust Remembrance Day, and further acknowledging January twenty-seventh as International Holocaust Remembrance Day in the city of Philadelphia. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, three, nine, entitled the resolution recognizing and honoring Paul Deegan on his retirement after more than thirty years of service to PIDC and more than forty-five total years of service to the city of Philadelphia. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, four, zero, entitled the resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank these conveying titles to certain properties located in the first council-matic district. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, four, two, entitled the resolution supporting House Resolution twenty-five, which would initiate investigations and call for the sanction, including removal from the House of Representatives of members who sought to overturn the twenty-twenty presidential election. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, four, three, entitled the resolution honoring and recognizing Dr. Kizmekia Corbett for her leadership and achievement on the National Institute of Health's COVID-nineteen Vaccine Research. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, four, four, entitled the resolution honoring and recognizing Stacey Abrams for her leadership as founder of the Fair Fight Action and the New Georgia Project, and, and her achievement in fighting voter suppression. And resolution number two, one, zero, zero, four, seven, entitled the resolution honoring and celebrating the legendary record label Philadelphia International Records on the occasion of their fiftieth anniversary, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved then. Second, that each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda be adopted. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda has been adopted. We will now consider the resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar, and Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two, one, zero, zero, three, eight.
A resolution authorizing the creation of a zoning code review commission to evaluate and recommend improvements to Philadelphia's zoning code.
And the chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
We will now consider.
I have additional resolutions, Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Decker? As I said, I was, I was getting ready to ask you to do the additional resolution.
Sorry for your interruption, Mr. President.
No problem, sir. That's why you're there.
We have a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold public hearings examining the feasibility of a multi-state reciprocity program for witness relocation using United States Department of Housing and Urban Development and public housing agency properties, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold public hearings to examine more equitable solutions to crime scene cleanup policies that place the logistical and financial burden on the families of homicide victims, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, I will speak to these resolutions at the speech of the majority. I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Intergenerational Affairs and Aging to hold public hearings examining solutions to the ongoing housing crisis impacting senior Philadelphians, introduced by Councilwoman Brooks.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings to review the motor vehicle stop of a young mother and her two-year-old son and resulting police activities, as well as other incidents that arose following the police killing of Walter Wallace, introduced by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passes calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our calendar for today. Prior to recognizing members regarding speeches, I will note for the record, at this time that we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized in order to comply with the Sunshine Act. The chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. With that said, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take a few moments to thank the fourteen councilmembers who co-sponsored my resolution, a whole resolution, resolution, to a whole hearing on how Philadelphia's senior population is impacted by the housing crisis. Just as our aging population has been disproportionately impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic, seniors are amongst the hardest hit by Philadelphia's housing crisis. This resolution commissions the Committee on Intergenerational Affairs and Aging to hold a series of hearings that would focus on a wide range of experiences that seniors have. Those who own their homes, renters, those who are incarcerated, and those who reside in shelter care are experiencing homelessness, and seniors who are living in nursing homes. As the city works towards recovery, that leaves no one behind. My hope is that these hearings will help us identify housing solutions targeted towards seniors and ensure that all our aging residents have access to safe and affordable housing. The pandemic has demonstrated that housing is the single most important way to stabilize communities and protect our neighbors. And we know that there is no one-size-fits-all solution, so I'm grateful for council's clear dedication to this issue, and I'm looking forward to getting to work, getting to work on these hearings. Thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The next, are there speeches on behalf of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilman Donald.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to thank all my colleagues, including also our state senators and state representatives for their support in our letter to Congress on proposing a dollar-for-dollar tax credit for office buildings and other facilities for indoor ventilation systems to help them get their economy back on track, to get them open, get them restarted. So I just wanted to thank everybody. I hope the federal government will take this up. From an economic standpoint, this tax credit is peanuts, peanuts, compared to the loss of the economy we have right now. They should all be in favor of doing this, so I hope they'll take this seriously and it will become a reality. And then I wanted to also comment, I guess, on the number one topic of the day, and that is I do share with everyone's frustrations regarding the administration's contract with Philly Fighting COVID, the preferential treatment, the lack of scrutiny, the inequities, and the lack of experienced leadership at the very top of the organization. Last week, I did speak with several businesses and organizations who are willing to support mass drive-through vaccinations across the city, open to everyone, even if they don't have a car. We talked about doing this in addition to neighborhood sites throughout the city, and now we're all talking about local pharmacy options as well, and we need to provide vaccinations everywhere in every possible option. I did propose these options to the administration and to Dr. Farley last week, sent a follow-up letter asking the administration to provide its plan by February twelfth. I did receive a response that they don't want to use locations like Lincoln Financial Field because only eighty-two percent of the people have access to cars. I think that's unacceptable. If, I'm sorry, eighty-two percent of the people have access to cars, eighteen percent do not have access to cars. If eighty-two percent of the people have access, we should look at every possible option because right now, I know many people driving to South Jersey, driving to Bethlehem or Allentown, or driving to Delaware or the suburbs to get vaccinations. We just need to meet people in every location. Cities small and large around the country have already implemented drive-through sites. New York, Chicago, LA, they have drive-through sites, huge drive-through sites, and they have also walkable neighborhood locations. They're doing it in every possible way. And by the way, New York City, I would venture to say they have less than fifty percent of the people have cars there. There's no reason why Philadelphia should be behind these other cities when we have people ready to figure this out. Lincoln Financial Field is ready to do this, and shame on us if we don't execute a plan that includes our largest facilities with most experienced people running these massive events. In speaking with the businesses, unions, churches, and other organizations, there's no shortage of people who want to help. Everyone, everyone wants to help, everyone, which is pretty amazing. We all deserve, of course, an explanation at tomorrow's hearing as to what happened and how people were impacted, but we have to keep our eye on the ball here and find a way to ensure the city of Philadelphia, the sixth-largest city in the United States, has a mass vaccination plan in place that is customer-focused, equitable, operationally achievable. Because if we don't start fixing this now, people will suffer, and we don't have any time left to allow that. But this is not just about Commissioner Farley. He shouldn't be out on a limb. We're all on the hook with him because I can tell you that hundreds of people calling me and emailing me do not make distinctions between Commissioner Farley, Mayor Kenny, President Biden, state legislators, or any member of council. They're blaming me. Philadelphians are anxious and stressed beyond belief. I've never seen anything like this, and they just want these vaccinations given out safely and equitably. They want these vaccines, and they want to trust us. It's our job to work with the administration now to help regain that trust, or we'll do more damage in the long run. I know we can't afford to make the same mistakes with Philly Fighting COVID again, so we have to take a minute and figure out how we got it at this point, but everyone is watching us, local, regional, national, and they're looking to us for some real leadership. Soon the number of vaccines will increase, and Philly, Philadelphia has to be ready. We, City Council, the administration, universities, stadiums, businesses, pharmacies, every organization who can step up right now, needs to do so, and we have to do everything we can to get these vaccinations into the arms of our residents. So I'm publicly raising my hand to offer support. So I'm publicly raising my hand to offer support to the administration, and I hope everyone here will do the same. We can get this done if we come together now, work as a team, and protect Philadelphians, save lives. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. I concur, we must stay focused. We really have to figure out a way to get this done. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start by paying homage to two angels who recently made their heavily transition. The first, Mr. President, is Dr. Ruth C. McGardis. Her name will be familiar to some because of her activism, community organizing in Northwest Philadelphia. But on this past weekend, the Philadelphia Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, of which I am a proud member, held our Omega Omega service for our late soror president, Dr. Ruth C. McGardis. I want to say to her family, thank you for sharing her and the contributions that she made to our sisterhood were invaluable, and we will do our best to keep her legacy alive. I also, Mr. President, want to acknowledge another member of our Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated who made her transition, and that is the late, great Cicely Tyson. Cinema, Mr. President, was the platform that Cicely Tyson chose to use her inimitable gift and skill as an actress. Her tool to help shatter racial stereotypes and glass ceilings. She was the epitome of style, of grace, and faith. And most importantly, what I love and I appreciate Viola Davis Taraji, along with Tyler Perry noting about her, what made her different from others in Hollywood is that she was authentic to the core, that she never changed, no matter what room you saw her in. She made us proud of our history, our culture, and our image. She taught us to never forget the strength of our mothers, fathers, and families, and that we can do anything together. She is a treasure that we will miss, and to be quite frank, Mr. President, I believe we are all simply better for having had the opportunity to observe her in action and be inspired by her greatness. Finally, Mr. President, I want to close with a message about homeownership to residents of the Ninth Councilmatic District in particular, but to all residents of the city of Philadelphia. I got an email probably last, last week, late last week, Thursday in the evening about someone saying to me, thank you, you know, for, in the midst of this pandemic, constantly keeping our eyes and focus on the need for homeownership. I thank our colleague Councilwoman Brooks for her resolution regarding the seniors as key. But I was reminded of that on Tuesday. I read an article by WHYY. It was written by a Taylor Allen. I'm not sure if she is Jake Blumgarth's replacement, but I want to thank them for this article, and it was entitled "Growing Surge of Philly Homeowners Risk Foreclosure As Pandemic Continues." And the article highlighted the case of a working, single mom with two kids who had lost her job as a home health aide because of the pandemic, and now she's struggling to pay her mortgage and could, in essence, lose her home. Now, according to the article, it stated that the latest available census data showed that about thirteen percent of homeowners are behind on their mortgage in the Philadelphia metropolitan statistical area. That's what was referenced in the article. I cannot stress this enough, but because I was a staffer and I thought about Councilman, a member of Bill Greenlee, those who were here during that time, I want us to note that this is a four-alarm-bell emergency crisis situation. For, for those of us who were in council when Councilwoman Marion Tasco led us, when we were working on that issue, it feels like deja vu all over again, and that is because it is. We are now here in Philadelphia approaching great recession levels of loans that are being passed due. Now, we all know that the black working class and in black working-class neighborhoods in particular, they took a strong, strong hit during the Great Recession, in part because they were heavily targeted by subprime lenders. And it looks like history could repeat itself if we don't begin to take more proactive measures. I'm going to mention some of those, but I want to take this moment to explain why homeownership, and particularly homeownership for black people and people of color is so vital. And I, and I've got to say this, and to that group who participated last week, no, I am not anti-rener. And with that being said, I want to firmly note for the record that I believe that a neighborhood must have a healthy mix of homeowners and renters. So when we read these new documents coming from academicians about we need to reimagine, you know, what single-family dwellings and household looks, looks, look like, I want us to make sure that we're focusing on what they really mean when they say what they say. Now, we know we just flipped from being majority homeowner in our city. Homeownership definitely, you know, outweighed renters, but we just flipped. And for me personally, I know what homeownership and my family did for me and, and my own personal success. And so when, when, when families like mine, and it's important, Philadelphia, if you're listening to this, I'm not talking about sort of politicals and government people, I'm talking about those people who are sending those emails, those of you who participated in that meeting that we had last week. Everybody has a story like this, but I need you to just get that many of us who are here, we know it too. When my mother got pregnant with me, when she was fifteen, and my grandparents decided that they were going to make a move, and, and my family did what folks would joke about and say moved on up like the Jeffersons, my grandparents weren't rich. Daddy was a Navy veteran, and my grandmother was a domestic worker. And yes, I'm saying it for those of you who were on that call on Thursday, because I want you to know, I can say it publicly because it is real. Despite their working-class wages and despite redlining and despite racial restrictive covenants, my grandparents were able to purchase a home, and guess what? The asset was theirs. Sherrell, how do you know? Because I went to the drugstore at Nineteenth and Shelton Ham to go get the money orders because they weren't banked, and that's what she would write out every month to pay the bills. But they were ever able to achieve that slice of the American dream. Their home was also a source of pride because it was proof to the world that they had achieved what I like to call some sense of self-sufficiency. And the neighborhood that I grew up in, and it still is, not just a success of, of, of home ownership, a story of home ownership, but of African-Americans and other people of color owning homes. So some of the areas in my district have a homeownership rate that is well above even the seventy percentile. But they were people of color and are people of color. So I want you to know that there is always a but. It seems like ever since neighborhoods like Mount Airy, even though people are trying to redefine you now as Cedar Brook and Widesworth and everything but what your neighborhood was called when you bought your house in the sixties and the seventies, this neighborhood became a success because of black homeownership, and there were larger forces at play that they are, they have tried and continue to try to take it away. Crack in the eighties, the winnowing of government supports in the nineties, the predatory lending of the two thousands. And even more recently, there have been stories about how black homeowners, they refinance less, they're paying more for their mortgages, they're facing appraisal gaps, meaning their home is appraised for less than it's actually worth. Many of these residents, they've managed to hold on to their homes, but all of these negative forces are at play. And it comes with a cost. You've held on to your homes, but your financial situations have become more precarious. We now have a situation where because these folks are retired and they're living on a fixed income, and the lady just said the other day, you know, she missed one payment, just one payment, Sherrell, I could lose my house to foreclosure. We haven't had enough money. I'm talking about disposable income, folks to maintain their houses. And so now their children are viewing their property as more of a liability instead of an asset. And, and of course, we still have predatory lending going on, but this time we know it's coming in a different form, reverse mortgages, which we've been seeing an uptick in origination since the pandemic began. Where does this leave us? Thankfully to you, organizations like Philadelphia Legal Assistance, Community Legal Services, Senior Law, that are doing everything that they can to keep homeowners in their homes. I want to thank the state for their pandemic mortgage assistance program funded by the Federal Cares. I know you've got a rental and a utility assistance plan that you're trying to get moving. Thank you for that. And of course, there is the National Foreclosure Moratorium on federally-backed loans, which the Biden-Harris administration is looking to extend from March 31st to September 30th. President Joe Biden's America Rescue Plan has also proposed funding to assist small landlords, renters, and people experiencing homelessness. And at the state level, I still hear you screaming, Michelle Lewis, from Northwest Counseling Services, the Homeowners Emergency Mortgage Assistance Program, HMAP, it is doing the best it can, but it was not set up to deal with the once-in-a-generation pandemic. Housing advocates are asking for the creation of a COVID Housing Assistance Fund to allow direct financial assistance to homeowners at the local level and before the pandemic. Proud of our colleagues, you know, funding BSRP, Philly First Home, Restore, Repair, Renew, and during the pandemic, thanking our colleagues for taking the lead on the Emergency Housing Protection Act. It went a long way to help us address some of the immediate challenges created by the fallout from COVID-19. All of these are good and necessary ideas, and I know we're going to continue to be front and center and advocating for them because we know what happens if we not, if we're not proactive when it comes to protecting homeowners. We saw it all too well in the aftermath of the Great Recession when they told us the market will correct itself, and Harrisburg preempted our legislation. I fear if we don't act proactively and we don't act now, and then the fallout from this pandemic, it could be even worse. I fear that our neighborhoods, and I want every Philadelphian, I want you to think about this. I don't want our neighborhoods to become filled with investor-owned rental properties, and then the dream of homeownership could get further and further out of reach to more and more renters. We cannot and should not let this happen. We must maintain that healthy balance of homeowners and renters, especially when you see how much people are paying the rent. They're paying mortgages triple time that they're paying in rent. We must protect those who already own a home, assist those who one day want to own a home, and avoid another Great Recession housing collapse. But it's going to take a collective effort, and we must start now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I rise to thank you. I thank you, Mr. President, for your guidance on the Police Oversight Commission that we submitted today, but also on the input from many, many stakeholders, ranging from power to the FOP, ranging from the administration to the Guardian Civic League, who gave us insight on, on this legislation. I want to thank my colleagues for working with my staffer Samantha Williams to put forth what I believe is a beginning discussion about the final leg of the race towards the establishment of this commission. We welcome, look forward to, encourage during the hearings insight and analysis as to how this commission should finally be structured. A good colleague of ours, Marion Tasco, said, "Act in haste and repent in your leisure." Yes, she did. So we want to take our time, get it right, so that we can do three things. One, restore confidence of the public that they can get a fair hearing about police misconduct. Number two, establish a trust and better working relationship with police civilian interaction. And then finally, reduce the high cost and burden when we get it wrong as a city due to lawsuits. So thank you for the cosponsorships, but also today, we introduced two other resolutions that if you look at it, are parts of this. One, we want to evaluate the witness relocation process in the city of Philadelphia. Some of my colleagues are here when we increase the amount of money dedicated for witness relocation. There is no justice without witnesses. In our analysis of the last one hundred shooters, and I think the stakeholders in that process too, they didn't point fingers, they pointed at the problem. We realize that we're going in the right direction, but not fast enough. The number one issue for the poor closure rate of cases is the lack of reliability of witnesses. Well, if you have to live on the same block that the accused that may have killed a relative of yours is go to the same corner store, some go to the same schools and churches, and then testify bravely about what you saw, what you know, you put your own life at risk. So we want to take a look at how we can make it easier to have justice and then have safety to accompany. And then finally, which disturbs me to no end, is that on your worst day, when a loved one of yours may have been tragically gunned down, it is the victims' families' responsibility to clean the crime scene. Many people do not know that there is money at the state to do that. We want to make sure that people understand that that is available, but it is often not enough. And I could not imagine, I could not conceive of that responsibility on what would be one of my worst days. So we want to look at all of these things to try to, in the Committee of Public Safety, create that balance that we see in the symbol of justice, the two scales. One, to protect the accused's rights, but also the responsibility of getting justice for the victims. And I thank you again, this is not parades, this is not ribbon cuttings and shovels for skyscrapers, but this is an essential part of our job. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I wanted to thank all of those who provided public comment in support of Resolution 210009 regarding the Twenty-Ninth Annual African-American Children's Book Fair. This year, the book fair will be held virtually on Saturday, February 6th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And the African-American Children's Book Fair is one of the oldest and largest single-day events for diverse children's books in the country. So I wanted to thank Vanessa Lloyd-Skambadi for her tireless work and dedication to bringing literacy and the love of books to all of our children. And you can follow the African-American Children's Book Fair and sign up to attend the virtual event on Twitter at AACBookFair. Again, that's AACBookFair. Please join them on Saturday, February 6th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. I know that my children and I will also be joining virtually. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gill.
Thank you very much, Council President. On Monday, nine thousand school staff are scheduled for the return to school. Children will, are scheduled in on February 22nd. But Monday is a callback for, for about nine thousand educators, school staff, that includes teachers, principals. for, for about nine thousand educators, school staff, that includes teachers, principals, um, maintenance workers, cafeteria workers, um, who are being called in. All of us, I know on this council body, is invested in a school reopening that is safe, that is responsible, and that must be state of the art. There is no other option, given the pandemic. There is no other option, given the consequences that are borne by vulnerable black and brown communities. And there is no other option, given the uncertainty of the months ahead. When a quarter of our elementary schools have no functioning mechanical ventilation system, which in itself is appalling and clear evidence of how much we are willing to tolerate abusive conditions for tens of thousands of young people, we must ensure that the reopening of school meets the highest standards of building quality, that we, uh, ensure the public trust, and that engages with the workforce of the district itself. The district has put in sixty-five million dollars in new renovations into buildings and into buying up, uh, personal protective equipment. And I want to make it clear that in our tour of buildings and in conversations that I've had with some of the principals and other educators around the district, some schools have probably never looked better. But this does not mean that the condition of some buildings should offset the reality that too many others are left behind and that the district is in desperate need of clear protocols around testing, what to do around outbreaks, it needs a better communication plan. The Biden administration has proposed a one-hundred-day rollout to the reopening of schools nationally. The rollout and the delay gives time for the Biden administration to see several things. One, what is happening with the case counts and the spread of dangerous new variants? Two, it talks about the progress of our vaccine rollout and how teachers, staff, families, um, can be vaccinated, included, uh, as, as we, um, as we move through the months ahead. Three, the passage of federal relief that would allow for mass testing and other safety measures, and finally, warmer weather, um, could potentially offer access to fresh air through open windows and outdoor classrooms. We are dealing with a number of issues, and I think we should make them clear. The governor needs to do more here. He should have made clear about the vaccination process. Forty-five percent of our school staff live outside of the city. This is a shared effort among counties to vaccinate, uh, and to prioritize educators and many others, other school staff who are in buildings, whether they are working in the boiler rooms, whether they are cleaning, um, for the schools, whether they are the school nurses or paraprofessionals who are student, who are assisting in the classrooms. This is a shared effort among all our counties. It is difficult to have Philadelphia bear the brunt of having, uh, to use its precious vaccine supply when so many people, um, need to see it as a county-wide, a five-county regional effort. Two, the district really does need to have testing protocols in place. We have building conditions, they're very serious. In the schools without functioning, um, without functioning ventilation systems, the fans are simply inadequate. Chicago School District, for example, purchased twenty thousand air purification systems when there was, when there were problems with the mechanical ventilation. The district has to step up. The district also needs to have clear testing protocols in place. We should be engaging with CHOP to see what their options are for both testing vaccinations and other types of support for all district staff and, and for students and families as we go in there. This is going to be a difficult process, um, and I do believe that the next forty-eight hours up until Monday are going to be critical. Um, but I do urge that our colleagues, um, take this very seriously. We cannot afford another situation where we've had botched efforts. This is the third time the district has tried to reopen. We know what was needed. We knew what was needed in August, we know what was needed in November when they wanted to open, and here we are in February, and it still feels like it's a struggle. I also want to emphasize that this is not just about the school district of Philadelphia. Every single school district is struggling right now. Um, our push to reopen is early compared to other large systems comparable to our size. And we need to be thoughtful, uh, we need to be deliberate, and we need to recognize, um, that all of us are driven by the needs of children and their families. The struggle, the realities of young people, um, the pain and trauma that they're going through, uh, on their own right now are apparent and are very painful to all of us. There is no substitute for in-person learning, but in a pandemic, we need to make sure that the process that we go through, um, supports the public trust, ensures a responsible, uh, return to school, and frankly, that lifts the standard so that it's not just that we're doing a fly-by-night or we're sticking fans into windows and passing it off. It does need to be state of the art. There do, there are standards, there is support, and from the Biden administration, it appears that help is, help is on the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to, uh, well, first I just want to follow up on my colleague, uh, Councilwoman Kim's remarks because I want to make, make it clear that I think that all members of this body are taking this very, very seriously. I know that, um, when I saw the fans myself, um, uh, you know, I, I was, uh, appalled, I would say. You know, it's just, it's not, um, uh, something that any of us would have imagined would be the standard for our children, uh, our educators, our support staff. I think that the, you know, the, the plan is, uh, full of a lot of holes, and I have a, a great, uh, deal of concern regarding, uh, what folks are being asked to return to. And we want, uh, we want our kids back in school, we want everyone back in school as quickly as possible, but it has to be done right. It has to be done, uh, in a way that's not going to put people's health in jeopardy. Um, and so I, I think I, uh, join all of my colleagues in saying that we all take this very seriously and that we don't want to, uh, lose this opportunity to make sure that everyone is going to be safe returning to our school buildings. Beyond that, I just wanted to remind everyone that we are going to be having a hearing tomorrow regarding the city's, um, uh, the Philly Fighting COVID debacle, uh, which happened, um, you know, in, in the last couple of weeks. I want to invite all of my colleagues to attend and to participate. I know that there have been a number of, uh, my colleagues that have already submitted questions to the administration, uh, and, and should have received a lot of those questions back. If you have not received those questions back, please let us know so that we can, uh, try to be helpful in that regard or, and, and also make sure that they get on the record for tomorrow. And, uh, the hearing will be tomorrow at one o'clock for the listening audience. We encourage you to participate and to, um, uh, if you would like to testify, you are more than, uh, able to testify. That is one of the functions of council, and so we want to invite you to participate as well and be a part of something that is going to be just really critical to making sure people know and understand exactly what happened. And the one thing I do, uh, also want to just, uh, slightly differ, uh, with my colleague, Councilman Dom, uh, who spoke on this matter earlier, and I, I get it, we, we've all been blamed, uh, you know, for, for, uh, what has happened here in the city of Philadelphia. We've all sort of taken a hit on this particular matter, but I believe that it's my job as a chairman of, of, of this committee to make sure that we get the record straight, that the, uh, Committee on Health and Human Services does not write contracts, does not execute contracts, uh, does not vet contracts. That is the job of the Kenny administration, always has been, and until further notice, really always will be. Um, and so this is something that he needs to, uh, recognize, and we intend to, uh, certainly ask the administration some very difficult questions tomorrow. Uh, we hope that they come, we hope that everything, uh, will be, um, uh, very cordial. There's no intention to, to, uh, be hostile in any way, shape or form. The most important thing is to build the trust, gain the trust of the public. And the most important way that you can do that is by making sure that they know exactly what happened and who the responsible parties are. So I look forward to having that conversation tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I will be brief. Um, I want to thank my colleagues for, um, their, in their speeches on a number of issues, uh, very important to the citizen, citizens of Philadelphia, from issues with vaccinations, from issues with housing, um, issues with our senior or seasoned population, um, to police oversight, as well as school reopening. Um, but one issue I wanted to raise is an, an issue I saw in today's paper, uh, something I've been following, um, quite a bit in reference to our hospitality industry. Um, yesterday, uh, it was reported on the mayor's office that hotel reservations were thirty percent down. We only had thirty percent, um, hotel, um, room rate last year compared to being about ninety percent, um, the year prior. Uh, that's a significant drop. Now, we know this is dropped based on the impact of the pandemic, um, but my concern is our economy is very dependent on the hospitality industry. We all can remember, um, back in the early nineties, you know, when Governor Rendell was mayor, and they created the Greater Philadelphia Marketing Tourism Committee, now known as the Philadelphia, as well as the, the growth and the expansion, uh, of the Convention Center Authority, uh, and Convention Center, and all of the various agencies like the Philadelphia Convention Business Bureau, uh, and all the entities that work on growing our economy. And we've made significant strides in really having a very robust hospitality industry. Uh, my concern is that there's a lot of jobs for citizens in the city of Philadelphia that are dependent upon this industry. And we need to make sure that if we are able to receive resources from the Biden administration, uh, and that comes to the city of Philadelphia, that we are doing all that we can to stay competitive. Um, some of my colleagues know I talked about how last year I saw other cities like Baltimore, and even in our region, Bucks County and Delaware County and the state of Delaware are actively trying to attract people back to their region, um, to spend money and to do things in their jurisdiction. Now, it is the winter time, but we are going to be coming out of the winter time going into spring very shortly, and it's going to be very important upon the city of Philadelphia to make sure we are focusing on being competitive. Uh, my concern is that when we have conventions and other activities in our city, they're booked years out, and we need to make sure that we're doing all that we can to promote the city of Philadelphia so we can bring those jobs back. Um, looking at November of nineteen, of twenty nineteen compared to November of twenty twenty, we lost about sixty-six percent of the jobs in that area, um, in hospitality. And so that's a, a lot of jobs and employ a lot of people from members of Unite Here, but also all of the restaurant workers and other entities and other businesses that are dependent on a robust hospitality and travel industry. So as we are coming through, um, this winter and going to the spring and getting ready for our budget season, and hopefully we'll receive some dollars from the federal government to help us in our own recovery, that we focus on being competitive as a city to bring back this industry and employ so many of our residents and constituents in our city and help our economy get back to where it was prior to the pandemic. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, that appears to be the conclusion of speeches on behalf of minority and majority. So with that, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, February eleventh, twenty twenty-one at ten AM.
Second.
Thank you. This will move in second, council stand adjourned until Thursday, February eleventh, twenty twenty-one at ten AM. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Move the polls.
Aye.
I've had it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Uh, again, um, hearing tomorrow, Friday, one o'clock, Committee on Health and Human Services, to discuss the issue with respect to vaccinations and the policy of the city of Philadelphia and a host of other things, I'm quite sure. Thank you very much. Be safe.